Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Harding, Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance that we remain standing for the invitation today by Councilmember Franka Hart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, no votes to state today, but I was traveling last week and so kind of looking at Omaha from afar, and we got some pretty nice things happening around here. Here are a couple of the things that I read in the paper while I was gone. You had the expansion of the Ronald McDonald House and that facility could be used as a template nationally. We had the announcement that Hot Lips Houlihan would be attending the Female Veterans Flight that Avon and Bill Williams do. UNMC, UNL, Iowa State, University of Iowa, and the Mayo Clinic, all teaming up to fight superbugs. Gene Simmons from Kiss showed up at the kickoff meeting for the Miller Public Schools. Had a couple more. Special thanks to the Home Company and Terry McGovern for the re-siding at Memorial Park, which unfortunately was needed. We were also ranked number six by the National Center of Arts for metropolitan areas of the midsize for our strength in the arts community. And the announced $22.5 million Sea Lion exhibit at the Henry Doerle Zoo. So those are some things when you're outside of Omaha, kind of looking back and seeing some of those things go on, it's gives you a lot of encouragement and excitement for being a resident in Omaha. Two more things to note, there's just, today was a funeral for Judge Mark Ashford. You might see some of the flags around Omaha at half-staff, which the governor approved till sunset tonight. And then, just a little special shout-out to our own Pete Hagan from the Parks Department, who qualified for the 2019 PGA Professional Championship, Golf Championship. Thanks.
And happy birthday to Councilman Pauls.
Oh, and happy birthday to Councilman Pauls.
Well, thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this city council meeting. The council thanks you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to turn off or mute any of your electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the plumbary plat for Pravada with a waiver of section 53-820B cul-de-sac length located southwest of 204th Street and West Center Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jim Bouger, 10250 Regency Circle. Here on behalf of the applicant, this is a mixed-use development at 204th, it's 192 acres, at the southwest corner of 204th and West Center Road. Can get most of it on here. We're anticipating developing this in two phases. The first phase would consist mainly of the single-family residential, and then there's a small commercial piece along West Center Road. Second phase would be the mixed-use area, which is in the northeast quadrant of the property. We have a recommendation from Planning Board and the Planning Department, and we're happy to answer any questions if you might have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item six, there are no lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to create street, or road maintenance district number 745-31 for the purpose of improving South 91st Avenue from Shirley Street to Hickory Street by asphalt overlay.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Brinker. Mr. Brinker.
I have a funny story about that. Mr. Tekechi, that's, we can go there some other day. It was, I was contacted by a couple of the neighbors who are in this, what would be created district, and they were unable to attend today, but I said I would relay their messages. They're happy to go forward with this project, look forward to working with the city and getting it done, and they apologize for not being able to be here today. But with that, I'll move for approval as well.
Moving to second to approve item seven, there are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, six to one. Item eight, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for the Next Big Thing LLC doing business as Jurassic Plastic Vinyl Lounge located at 1118B Howard Street is communication and opposition.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. My understanding is they're going to...
The applicant is requesting the item be postponed to August 21st.
Moving to second to lay over to August 21st, there are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Rukar Inc. doing business as Time Clock Lounge located at 4601 South 90th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Scott Mass, President of Rukar Incorporated.
Thank you. And you're here to answer any questions we might have, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item nine, there are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item nine is approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an application to consider a Class B liquor license for Amigos Market LLC doing business as Amigos Market located at 2104 Q Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there, Caesar Rivera with Amigos Market, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Address, please.
2102 South Q Street.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moving to second to approve item 10, there are no lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an application to consider in addition to Tida LLC doing business as Ika Ramen located at 6109 Maple Street for in addition to their Class I liquor license for an outdoor area approximately 16 feet by 25 feet to the south.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm familiar with this establishment in Benson, and they've been doing a nice job with the relocation here. I did think the owner might be here today, but I know they haven't had any issues there. I may ask the city clerk one question about it. I believe this is an extension off Ika Ramen to the back to create a patio. Is that correct?
I believe so. Let me pull the application really quick.
And the reason I ask that question is because there is a basement establishment to a new Japanese speakeasy on the bottom floor there that is quite successful too, but I don't think it applies to that.
It is, that is correct. It is on the back.
Okay. All right. And is this still subject to permits?
I believe so. We didn't have any memos from the building department stating otherwise.
Okay. So it's a straight approval?
Correct, yeah.
Well, I, we typically expect them to be here, but I will follow up with them afterwards, and I think it's okay to move forward today, given their history and the good business they're doing, so I'll motion approve.
Moving to second to approve item 11, there are no lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 was held on July 24th, 2018. We have one light. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to ask the council to lay this particular ordinance over for several weeks, and one of the reasons why we're still looking at the time and the dates, we're still in, trying to find a compromise there. Also, we want to have a parallel or a complementary ordinance that would also discuss the number of permits that may be issued, fines or penalties that may be issued, so the selection process, and we have some concerns about the safety and communication issues. By developing both of these ordinances on the same wavelength as you may say, pass them together, I think that would make, it would clear this up, and our due date would be at the end of, no later than at the end of September.
Sorry, September 25th?
September 25th, yes.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Moving to second to approve, to amend, to lay over until September 25th. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. And just to maybe extend some of the intent that I think Mr. Pauls is referring to, I'll support the motion today, but it's no indication of a lack of interest in this issue, I want to make sure that's clear. In fact, quite the contrary, the council is very interested in the details of addressing the fireworks ordinance and a number of the ideas that have been proposed, so it's an effort to bring back one ordinance that has all ideas incorporated in it and doesn't require a bunch of amending, but that could achieve hopefully unanimous support, so I just wanted to express that and take what Mr. Pauls said one step further.
Thank you. Mr. Harding.
Thank you. I understand the concept of doing all of the things, or trying to incorporate all the things in it at once. I was prepared to vote on this today with the current, or with the proposed reduction of days as well as the reduction of day parts that you could ignite. I am supportive of the idea of having fines that we discussed last week and increasing enforcement, also the safety notification that Mr. Pauls mentioned too, I think were some of the things I brought up, and understood that those, because they were not addressed in the original proposal, would have to go through their own, their own procedure for the approval of the ordinance, but I just wonder if five, you know, the 25th is one, two, three, we don't meet on the 4th, four, that's six more meetings. Would you accept a friendly proposal to shorten that time, or do you think that that's necessary?
Go ahead, Mr. Pauls.
Thank you.
It's your birthday, you can do anything.
Right, thank you. I talked to the staff about this, and the time we did, got everything in order, they, it was suggested that we use this amount of time, because there'd be three readings, and we're off the first, I think the first week of September, so...
Okay. Thank you.
There are no further lights, and there's a motion in the second to lay over till September 25th. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 13 through 42 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number that you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moving to second to approve items 13 through 42, there are no further lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 43, a resolution to approve the appointment of Rebecca M. Harding, owner of Tac Architects located at 2922 North 61st Street, Suite Number One, to be a member of the Benson Business Improvement Area Board to serve a term from August 7th, 2018, to August 6th, 2023.
Public hearing on agenda item number 43 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
Moving to second to approve item 43, no lights, roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
I was getting ready to think, I, yeah, don't you do that.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Councilmember Harding passes due to a potential conflict of interest. Item 43 is approved, six to zero. Item 44, an ordinance to transfer a permanent easement and land to Metropolitan Utilities District for purposes of relocating facilities upon city-owned property located near 144th and 1st National Bank Parkway.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 45, an ordinance approving the grant agreement with the Nebraska Department of Environmental Quality to finance the operation of Under the Sink, the household hazardous waste facility located at 4001 South 120th Street to provide for reimbursements totaling an amount of $337,500.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. I just wanted to share a discussion we had about this item this morning, just public hearing today, but I obviously support this facility, I think we all do. This is how we dispose of household hazardous waste in the city, and it's a great partnership when it was first established through philanthropy as well as city funding. I know when I went to do this myself recently, that there was some confusion about the hours of the facility, and we concluded this morning that there was in fact an error on the city's website as to what the hours are. It'll soon be corrected, so I think it listed it was closed Saturday through Tuesday and fairly minimal hours on Thursday, Friday, and Wednesday, which of course are not convenient to anyone. But the truth is, and what's being corrected, is that there are reasonable hours. The facility is closed Sunday and Monday, and Tuesday that are primarily processing materials, but Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, it is staffed and open to the public, so we'll get that corrected shortly, and hopefully folks will use this facility as a good resource to dispose of their household hazardous waste. Thanks.
Thank you. There are no further lights, next item.
Item 46, an ordinance vacating a portion of Saratoga Street bound on the west and the north by Lot 1 of Fort Omaha Expansion, providing for the reversion or transfer of the same. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Items 47 to 59 pertain to the 2019 annexation package to extend the limits of the City of Omaha to the following areas, and Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 47, Cherry Ridge SID 380 located northwest of 108th Street and Military Road. Item 48, Cinnamon Creek and adjacent SID 392 located southeast of 180th Street and Q Street. Item 49, Weston Hills, Weston Hills West and adjacent SID 415 located southwest of 144th Street and Fort Street. Item 50, Quail Hollow and adjacent SID 437 located southeast of 165th Street and Q Street. Item 51, West Bay Woods and adjacent SID 439 located northwest of 180th Street and F Street. Item 52, Lake Cunningham Ridge SID 445 located northwest of 75th Street and I-680. Item 53, Bay Ridge, West Bay Woods 2 and adjacent SID 463 generally located southeast of 192nd Street and Spring Street is an amendment of the whole requested by the Law Department. Item 54, West Village Point, Village Cove SID 483 located southeast of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. Item 55, West Dodge Station SID 487 located northwest of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. Item 56, Manchester Park and adjacent SID 493 located southwest of 168th Street and Locust Street. Item 57, Pacific Point Estate and adjacent SID 498 located northwest of 192nd Street and Shadow Ridge Drive. Item 58, Pacific Woods and adjacent SID 500 located northeast of 204th Street and Pacific Street. And item 59, Miracle Hill, Miracle Hills Golf Course and adjacent located southeast of 120th Street and Blondo Street.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 47 through 59 are today. Proponents, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff for the mayor's office. I just wanted to take a few minutes real fast and introduce the annexation package for this year, kind of go over some of the main points. Before you, on the monitors, is an exhibit illustrating all of the SIDs as shown in blue and the adjacent areas that are being proposed for annexation this year. One of the, or a few of the goals and objectives of the mayor and the city as we contemplate annexation each year is to eliminate islands, that the entire annexation package must be revenue positive for the city and does not compromise public safety. We feel that this package accomplishes those goals and objectives. So there are 13 areas that are being proposed for annexation totaling 1,949.6 acres of land. These are a combination of residential and commercial office districts. The package will bring in 8,771 new residents. This population is based on the 2010 census data, increasing the population to an estimated 459,000, which ranks us as one of the top 40 largest cities in the United States. The city will see an increase in over a billion dollars in new valuation. There are 10-year financial projections associated with the package. The property tax will see an increase of approximately 58 million, sales tax 15 million, street and highway funding 7 million, for a total revenue increase of $83 million over the course of the next 10 years. The total debt that we anticipate will be incurred as part of this is 38 million, and the cost of providing city services, approximately 40 million, for a 10-year net balance of over $9 million. Most of the areas will see reduced property taxes. The average property tax reduction is about $500 per 100,000 valuation. Some individual properties in areas adjacent to SIDs will see increases, however. Public safety will not be compromised. These areas have had low 911 call volumes historically, and the OPED will see an increase in sworn officers, an increase of 20 officers, 2019 and 2020 budgets. This would give OPED an authorized sworn strength of over 920 officers as part of the plan over the next year or two. So right now, there's this kind of model ratio of officers to citizens, to residents. There would be at least 1.91 officers per 1,000 residents in the city with the increase. There are eight new parks and one future trail corridor that's being proposed for a total parkland of 119 acres. There are no road projects listed in the CIP that impact the proposed annexed areas, and immediately they will receive all services provided by the city once annexation is approved, including police, fire, solidways, street maintenance, and snow removal. Just wanted to touch on a few of the points of the annexation package. This item was heard by the planning board, did receive a recommendation for approval, and again, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. I'm sorry. Opponents?
Please.
Come, anybody who's an opponent, would you please come down, so I don't have to... Go ahead.
Thank you.
Opponent.
And happy birthday. My name is Dave Keber. My family and I live on an acreage.
Address, please, for the record.
At 3329 South 192nd Street.
Thank you.
On behalf of myself and my neighbors, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to stand before you, to reiterate our appeal that you exclude us from the city's current annexation proposal. Throughout the last three weeks, I've reached out to you by email. I hope that you've had the opportunity to review the documents that I've sent you. In the short three minutes that I have today, I will not have time to highlight all of our concerns, but I'll touch on a few of the many, and so please refer to those documents for clarification, and I have some of those documents with me today if they would be beneficial for you. So in short, annexation will levy a dramatic disproportionate hardship upon my family and my neighbors. We are still struggling under the dramatic 2016 tax increase from the Douglas County Assessor, and unfortunately, this annexation will bring yet another dramatic tax increase in very quick succession. For me, for example, it will mean an additional $1,250 a year in taxes plus wheel tax and city sales taxes. Unfortunately, in addition to this annexation, will also invalidate the green belt status that I have been awarded. For four years, my family and I have worked exhaustingly in establishing our organic farm, and for years, we have applied for green belt status. After thousands and thousands of hours of work and extensive documentation, multiple site visits, the assessor has just approved us for green belt. And now, by annexation, we will lose it. This will result in further tax impact. In fact, since 2016, my total tax impact post-annexation will grow 71.5%. How does a working family of six on one income compensate for that? Keep in mind, too, that this financial hardship is on top of the fact that unlike annexed SIDs, we have paid out of pocket for all of our own infrastructure, our gravel roads, our sewage treatment systems, our wells, and furthermore, annexation will mean that we are at risk to suffer additional significant financial losses if, upon failure of these utilities, we are forced by the city to hook up to city services. Estimates show this potential expense down the road could be as high as $40,000 out of pocket. Again, we have older folks here, retired folks, working-class folks, we're just trying to make ends meet. Consider, too, that these potential financial hardships come with no improvement in services. Consider, for example, having to drag your own trashcans down an acre-long gravel road in the middle of wintertime. Consider that we're already on the Elkhorn Suburban Fire District, nothing will change with our responses. Omaha Police already respond to our area. We are essentially being taxed more, gaining nothing. These concerns are a few of the many. In short, we are financially suffering and will see no improvement. This annexation came suddenly. Without consideration, the mayor's plan has lumped us in with dissimilar properties. Without due consideration for our unique situation and the dramatic hardships it would impose, the plan has rushed forward. Because of our unique circumstances and this disproportionate burden, we need time to adjust financially and personally. We are simply asking for that time. We need time to adjust. Please exclude us from the annexation. The neighborhood of Oakmont on our southern border has been excluded. It's not being annexed. One of our own neighbors, who was originally annexed with us, has now been excluded by the mayor. And the agricultural land on our western border has also been excluded. We are not an island. We are not an island now, and we will not be an island after annexation. Our roads are plowed by Douglas County, or by the state crews, they're plowed and maintained by state crews. We're on the western edge of the city now and will be after annexation. We're not an island. We gain nothing in services, our taxes skyrocket, we need some time. If you want a paper copy of any of the documents I've sent, please let me know. I have them here. If you want to see anything up on the screen now, I can show you, I can show you a map of the area, I can show you the tax increases broken down for my property and all my neighbors, I can show you a cover letter that has been signed, or has all the contact information of all my neighbors. I also reference state or city statute related to the infrastructure issues that I've raised, for example, the forced installation of city sewer remains with failure. Questions for me?
No, if you could, if you could, the documents that you have, if you could give those to the city clerk so that they could...
I would be happy to, yes.
So that they could be dispensed amongst council members?
Thank you.
We'd appreciate it. Is that your testimony?
Yes, sir.
That all you said? Thank you. Are there anyone, are there any others in opposition?
Jeff Guthmiller.
Which item number is yours, I'm sorry, which item number is yours, by the way, before you?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, okay.
Yeah.
And I was fifty-three also.
Same here, fifty-three. Jeff Guthmiller, thirty-two fifteen. Dave stole all my thunder there, but, I mean, we're reasonable people. We're not trying to get out of paying taxes. Alls we're asking for is time to see the financial burden that it would place on us if we had to replace our septic system well and tap into the city service. I think that, that's a lot of money for anybody to have to adjust to so quickly. So, again, all we're asking for is time to make decisions for our families and our lifestyle, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other opponents who be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, Members of the Council. My name is Sean Kelly, two-eight-zero-four, South Eighty-seventh Avenue, appearing this afternoon in opposition specifically to item number fifty-nine on today's agenda. Representing the property owner of Miracle Hills Golf Course, what is impacted by this proposal is simply annexation of Miracle Hills Golf Course. So the clubhouse area and those amenities, right now, are currently within the city and therefore paying city taxes already. So we're talking about the hundred-and-thirty-two acres of this golf course, which, as you all know, is in a very good location in the city of Omaha, which could potentially be a great site for redevelopment. And part of the property owner's vision would be through financing through a sanitary improvement district. So that's the long-term goal of the property owners and the primary reason we're here today opposed to this annexation. That takes, an annexation will take that financing tool off the table. As you, as city council members, are well aware, municipalities in Nebraska have limited tools for economic development, redevelopment, and we'd hate to lose this opportunity. Secondarily, reasons for the opposition is, number one, it's a net loss in regards to this annexation package, and last, obviously, on a golf course, there's no population increase either. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Luis Jimenez, five-eighteen North Florias Street. Mr. President, this was put forth as a package today, so I wanted to speak on that light, the mayor's package for annexation. This is done year after year after year, and, well, with the mayor, anyway, the current mayor. One thing that is talked about is having to deal with the islands within the city. And every year, I see islands. And also, an expansion of the city. So I also see that the mayor, well, the proponent spoke about increasing the city population. It's going to be ranked somewhere. So what? I don't think that the mayor should be bringing these things year after year after year and say, oh, it's going to increase, you know, revenue for the city, when we just heard that some areas have to do upgrades in their properties, pay more taxes on their streets, on their sewages. Well, why is the mayor annexing areas and not providing relief for those situations? I'm in the firm belief that if the mayor's going to keep annexing areas, they should be very well taken care of financially and not provide this problem. You know, there's streets, situation with the streets that have to deal with upgrading to substandard, I mean, to standard, and that's something that is a financial burden on the property owners. Okay? So I'm just, I just want to say on this, on this package situation, and the repeated annexations by the mayor, I think that we should look into saying, hey, hold on, what's the actual cost to the city and property owners? Because some of these people, you know, can't deal with it, just like the proponents we're, or opponents we're talking about. So thank you for...
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing that public hearing is closed, Mr. Festerson?
Thanks, Mr. President. So I support annexation and always have, and think it's an important tool for our city to keep growing, as long as we are maintaining and accounting for all the costs that come along with new areas, and it's a financial positive to the rest of the city, and if those areas are contiguous and provide continuity of service provision. I think that's mostly accomplished in this, in this package we have today, including one area that would be added to my district, Lake Cunningham Ridge, which I support, and I think will be a nice addition up near, a great asset for the city, which is Lake Cunningham. Just a couple of comments, and maybe then a couple of questions of Mr. Anderson. One thing I want to be careful, when we're talking about services, though, that we are talking apples-to-apples, and I know we talk a lot about building up our police force, and we're all doing that, and we've all supported that, and I support what's in the budget to keep that going in 2019. But I want to be careful when we say there's nine-hundred officers in nineteen and nine-hundred-and-twenty, we think, in 2020, because it takes time to build up those forces, and it takes resources to do that in a very deliberate way, and I know the chief's working on that. But today, we have eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight officers actually on the street, and we have a large recruit class coming in October, but recruit classes take time. That's probably typically nine months before they're actually on the street. So under that plan, our current mode of operation, I think we'd be fortunate to have probably eight-hundred-and-eighty on the street in summer of nineteen. And to me, what's on the street is what matters, not so much what we call sworn, and that's always been the back-and-forth about police resources. It's not so much sworn numbers that matter, that might be your goal, but what matters is police on the street, and so I just want to make that point, that we need to be very attentive to that and be very deliberate about building up those forces as we annex new areas, so that we do have the coverage we're all seeking, even as we add a West Omaha precinct. So we heard from two areas today that are opposed to being annexed, Bay Ridge and Bay Woods, and then, of course, Miracle Hills. I'm open to those concerns. I know that Miracle Hills has been a longtime proposition and is an island in the city, so we're all anxious to see that be something different. But I do appreciate the argument the owners are making, that they intend to do that, and they do want to have the mechanism of an SID to be able to develop that in a substantial way, rather than seeking some other kind of benefit once those opportunities run, come around. So in a more traditional sense, they want to develop the property like others have had the opportunity to do, so I'm very open to that concern and that desire, and would be open to removing that from the package. The Bay Ridge, Bay Woods is a complicated issue. I wanted to ask Mr. Anderson a few more issues about, we talked about this morning. So I appreciate and am open-minded to the concerns that neighbors have there, given the unique status of those properties being not in an SID, and one, and maybe two of them now having green belt status. But also concerned about what that might mean, being removed from a package in terms of future precedent. So, Mr. Anderson, if you could share with us what you talked about this morning in terms of the rationale for taking out one but not the rest, and then your thought about what that means for green belt going forward, and annexation going forward for that matter.
Yeah, let me get one other illustration, give me just a second. Okay, so the, in response to your question, the area that you specifically referenced is the area adjacent to the Bay Ridge and West Bay Woods SIDs. I'll highlight, all of the areas highlighted in green, outlined in green, are part of the, this particular area, SID and adjacent area ordinance, ordinance number fifty-three, and more specifically, the properties that are kind of in question are these properties here. I'm going to come back to this illustration in just a second, I want to make sure that there's some, some good information being shared. So remember, this is a, an annexation package of approximately one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-six acres. There's a total of three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-six properties being contemplated as part of this annexation package. So of those three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-six properties, only twenty-nine properties are actually adjacent areas. All the other three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-some-odd properties are actually, are actually properties located within an SID. So of those twenty-nine properties, which accounts for less than one percent of the total number of properties, thirteen properties have been identified as residential, which includes a single-family residence on the property. Nine properties are either multifamily residential, commercial, or associated with a commercial use. One property is agricultural land under lease by a governmental agency, and the remaining seven properties are exempt because they are owned and operated by a governmental agency. So if you can see on the illustration, you can see all the areas highlighted in blue are all the SIDs. The small areas recognized in red are those adjacent areas that we're talking about here. So going back to that illustration, so these are the, the properties that are adjacent to the Bay Ridge, West Bay Woods to SID. The property here to the south is the property that included in your packages is a petition or request to have that property removed. This property is owned by Mr. Chaloha, I'll get into that here in just a minute. These are the other six properties that have been part of the conversation. Back on July fourth, the city's hotline, the mayor's hotline, received a letter from five of those six property owners. Those five property owners are the ones highlighted there in that blue-green outline, and I have for the record the letter that was provided to the hotline from those five property owners, and a subsequent response from the mayor's office that responded to a lot of the questions and comments that were outlined, and I'll go ahead and submit that for the record now.
Please.
So, so just to elaborate a little bit, we were approached by Mr. Chaloha to remove his property from the annexation package. As we heard the pleas and as we evaluated the request, we have discovered that, and it was brought to our attention, that this property has been granted green belt status. And I'll clarify that, green belt status is a, an allowance, it's called special valuation in the statutes, allows the assessor to reduce the valuation of a property based on agricultural use. The valuation reduction can be reduced to seventy-five percent of the market value, and from what we understand, Mr. Chaloha has carried that special valuation or that green belt status for a number of years. So as of today, his property, and for many years, his property has already been devalued or reduced in value to recognize that green belt status. Mr. Keever, who owns the property immediately north of, from what we understand, yes, was granted green belt status from the county assessor this year. However, we know and understand that the, the benefits that would be seen from that green belt status would not be seen until the next tax cycle or the next tax year. So right now, and in the immediate past, his property has been valued very similar to the other five properties immediately north of him. He wouldn't see that reduction in property value until the next tax cycle, which would arguably be after the annexation package is considered and approved, and so he wouldn't see the same exponential increase in tax levy and property valuation that Mr. Chaloha has seen. And so that was somewhat of the, the reasoning and the justification for petitioning city council to consider removing Mr. Chaloha's property. Now, with that being said, we have begun some due diligence in identifying what the impact of green belt status properties or properties that have been granted special valuation will have on future annexations moving forward. We've begun to identify the number of properties in unincorporated areas of Douglas County, and how that's going to affect policies and procedures moving forward on whether or not we're going to respond to including or not including properties that have been granted green belt status in the future. Hope that answers your question?
Yes, so distinction you're making by proposing to remove Mr. Chaloha's property is that he already had green belt status and was at seventy-five percent valuation. And for those that are wondering what green belt status is, it's a designation you can get if your property is being used for agricultural purposes near a city, so that when you're using those, your property for that purpose, you're not subject to large increases in your valued property, just given your proximity to the, to the city boundaries, right?
That's correct.
And so your distinction with him is that he already had it, and because he already had it, this is a huge increase for him, should he be annexed. The others have not had it yet, and so that's the distinction in what you're proposing.
Correct.
Could you give us a sense, if you're far enough along in your research, how many more properties along the city border have green belt status presently as a tens, you know, twenties, hundreds?
Our estimation, ninety percent approximately of unincorporated Douglas County has been granted green belt status. We're vetting the specifics of that, and whether or not, there was some case law a couple of years ago whereby the Nebraska Supreme Court ruled on some appeals whereby there were residences located on parcels, and whether or not those properties should be continued to be allowed to maintain their special valuation. The Nebraska Supreme Court said no, that once a residence is placed on a parcel, that that property should no longer be given the special valuation. So what we're kind of counterbalancing, that analysis of how many properties in unincorporated Douglas County there are, with whether or not there are a number of properties that the city would have the potential of annexing and what the, it's, it's an ongoing process right now. That's the information that we've kind of gathered at this point.
Okay. I don't think it's the first time we have annexed a property that was, had green belt status, which then lost it, but the first time in quite some time, is that accurate to say?
Yeah, from what I understand, maybe four or five years ago, there were some properties that were included in an annexation package that had green belt status. What the circumstances surrounding, we haven't done the research on.
So with that many properties, though, it sounds like this is an important issue to get correct, and, and does raise, I think, you know, some concern about precedent and how this might be handled going forward, in my mind. Maybe just a question for you, or Mr. Curtis, too, on both of these properties in question, or, I shouldn't say properties, but items in question that contain these properties, as well as Miracle Hills. In an annexation package, it's important to have a balanced package that brings in revenue but also assumes debt and pays for city services, and the objective is to have a balanced, balanced package, both in the one-year prospect and over the long term, which we typically measure in ten years. And in doing so, you're able to take on properties and grow in an orderly fashion and not leave properties that do become islands over time. And so this package does that, but I think it's important to note that the two properties in question here really don't add to that mix one way or the other. In fact, Miracle Hills, in the one-year prospect, is a negative to the city, and over ten years is also a negative, a slight negative in the overall package, but a negative nonetheless, largely because we've already, I think, adopted what was producing revenue in that area so far. And the Bay Ridge, West Bay Woods is a one-year loss as well, should, should all those properties be taken out? A slight positive over the ten-year balance, but not, you know, not, not a major amount. So I don't think the financial implications of what we're discussing here today are really the main concern, because they don't impact the overall package. But a greater concern to me would be how we handle the development proposition at Miracle Hills, and then with these, how we're going to handle the inequity that's happened as a result of this, but then also the precedent of what does that mean for green belt going forward. So with that, I think I'll yield the floor to others who I'm sure have questions, unless I saw your standing, did you want to speak?
If I can have maybe one minute?
Yeah.
Kind of follow up on a couple of things.
Please, yeah, go ahead.
I won't take too much of your time.
I want to, I want to just start, too, by clarifying or emphasizing once again that I am here speaking on behalf of all of these homeowners in this group of acreages, who will be so disproportionately affected by this annexation. So that's first. With, so that's a separate issue. With regard to the green belt status, I also want to emphasize, too, that although it's true, I won't see any of the benefit until next year, tax-wise, I have these documents here for you, and I included those in the email, and it shows that the Douglas County Board is actually voting today. So it's, it's going to move forward today, and I spoke with Mr. Michael Goodwilly with the Douglas County Assessor's Office, and he assured me, or I shouldn't say that, he stated that oftentimes, oftentimes, once it has made it through this extensive application process, the, the actual Board of Review is typically, they go along with the real estate experts with the assessor's office and their site visit information. So, yes, I won't realize the benefit till next year, but that benefit is still there nonetheless, and will be gone with this annexation. And that's the other thing I want to emphasize, too, and to your point of really making, here's the other document mentioned, of really understanding the importance of this, is the green belt legislation was intended to, as you say, protect agricultural areas on the perimeter of an urban area. As that urban area is encroaching upon these agricultural areas, it was put forward, forward to say, hey, we're going to look out for these people, so their land is not overvalued, and it doesn't force them out of their lifestyle or business. and it doesn't force them out of their lifestyle or business. Ironically though, one of the very, and this might go without saying, but ironically, one of the very factors that can invalidate green belt status is annexation by the very urban entity itself. So this is a huge deal. This is, once I lose this today with your vote, I'm never getting it back. It's done. And that's why I'm just asking for due diligence, not only with regard to the green belt here, but also considering the disproportionate financial hardship that we're imposing upon these homeowners here, for no gain in city service. Keep in mind the inequity here, and how it's going to affect us. I have neighbors who've been there for 40 years, they already lost land when Elkhorn Public Schools came in and stole eminent domain, okay?
Let me get you to wrap it up.
Okay, I apologize. So anyway, long story short, so there is that, I want, I want you to keep that in mind, that it's not just about the green belt, although that is important to me personally, it's about all of us and how it's going to affect us. And I'll just surrender the microphone then, and talk to you afterwards if I can answer any more clarification.
Okay, thank you. And you are correct, when a property is annexed, they do lose green belt status if they had it, that is accurate. And also, we're not voting today, it's just public hearing, but, yeah. Mr. Anderson, one question I did forget to ask, that occurred to me when Mr. Kraber was speaking there. So the mayor's proposed removing one property that does have green belt status, and I think as you was pointing out, the rationale was, green belt status has been achieved, and the concern was the big increase that individual would have by immediately being annexed as opposed to their properties. But in your, in your communication with that property owner, there has been no guarantees about the future, you're not saying that will never be annexed, she has just said sort of a one-year grace period, or how would you characterize that?
Yeah, the conversation I had with Mr. Chaloha, when we had communicated the idea that the mayor was going to, and the mayor's office going to be petitioning city council to remove his property, was an understanding that the removal of the property this year as part of this annexation package did not preclude the city from pursuing annexation of his property in the near future. And as I explained that, the way I explained it was, there's actually an SID immediately south of Mr. Chaloha's property. And so as that SID becomes financially viable and ripe for annexation, now we would be creating a situation in which you have expanded the city's corporate limits, south along 192nd Street, including the properties that we've discussed here, and then carving out, if you elected to carve out one or all properties, and Oakmont, that SID will get annexed in the future, now you see a discontinuity in service of the maintenance and operation of 192nd Street. You begin to create, while it may not be an island in the contextual term of surrounded on all sides, it is surrounded on nearly all sides, that now we see an interruption in service that may be provided to those residents or to those property owners. Hence the reason why the city has historically considered adjacent areas, is to clean up those boundaries, and assure that those boundaries follow major thoroughfares, major geological features, so on and so forth, so the city can maintain effectively and efficiently the provision of city services.
So a bit of a grace period while you, while you adopt a policy, no guarantees about even next year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Thanks, Troy, as long as you're there, I'll, I'll kind of follow up, go in reverse where I was going to go, but in addition to what Mr. Fesserson was just asking on any guarantees in the future, I suppose too, Mr. Chaloha also understands that there's no guarantee in this package as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Could you, could you bring that last slide back up, please? The, the six properties that are north of Mr. Chaloha, is the one kind of in the middle, I guess, did that one, was that not one that signed on to the letter with?
That's correct. The letter that we submitted into the record includes the property owners that are shown here, highlighted in, in green. For whatever reason, this property owner did not sign, participate in that letter.
I see Mr. Keever back up, so I'll, okay, I'll-
It's still in the newest document, he was out of town and couldn't sign it by the time you submitted, and that's on your-
That's on the newest one, okay, that's, and I wanted, so, so David forwarded, while I was away, I think I forwarded one of the packages to the clerk, or to the rest of the council, and what I think he gave today was the new one that included that one, I just wanted to be clear on that. But does, can anyone answer for me, was, was the green belt status then approved at the county board today? Does anyone know the answer to that?
Oh, no.
Okay. Well, again, we're not voting on it today, but that would be an important. I also agree with, with, with Mr. Fesserson, some others that I've spoken with about precedent of, setting precedent on how we handle this, and I just wanted to make sure that in this next week, a consideration, at least as it relates to adjacent areas and green belt areas, that, that we, that we further vet that, that out, and have a good, healthy conversation about it, because I want to make sure that what we're doing is not only consistent with what we've been doing in the past, but also on a path going forward. Then I have a couple of questions, thanks Troy. I have a couple of questions that relate, I think I'll ask Mr. Bench on, actually, it's in 53 as well, and I've had some conversations with the Parks Department about the, the maintenance of the ponds, both in 53 and 57, and I apologize, I wasn't able to be a pre-counsel today to, got to take you off, I was going to ask you about these, but could you just talk a little bit about, or have someone talk a little bit about the continued maintenance of those facilities? And when I say facilities, I mean the stormwater detention. And I'm not sure if that's Troy or Brooke, but, go ahead.
So yeah, so we have identified a number of stormwater management facilities, i.e. retention ponds, detention ponds, silt basins, they probably go by a number of different names, but they are part of a drainage system, whether it be isolated or part of a larger stormwater system. Right now, a number of those ponds, we'll call them, are being maintained by SIDs as, we'll call it an SID amenity. The city will maintain those in their capacity as a stormwater management system. So things like fountains, that are maybe part of a pond that are currently being paid for with electricity and other maintenance and operations, will no longer be served by the city. The city parks and recreation department will maintain those as stormwater facilities in such a way as, as they were designed to maintain. So, so long as they are able to capture the volumes of water that they were intended for, and as long as they outflow volumes of water as they were intended, then the city would continue to mow and maintain those accordingly. If for whatever reason, they did become, and I know probably the question's leading into dredging and those kind of things, so as those ponds become silted, to the extent that they're no longer functioning as they were originally designed, then at that point in time, we would respond accordingly to their engineering behind how they function and work, not necessarily as a neighborhood or SID amenity.
Do you have any idea of, one, on, on either one of these two, the last time they were dredged, or is there kind of a rule of thumb of so many years before, between dredgings?
We met with representatives of Pacific Woods West, SID, and representatives of the HOA, which would then be responsible to pick up any other maintenance costs above and beyond what the city provides. I think they had indicated that they had dredged that, that pond, that facility about three years ago, four years ago. I'm going to ballpark here, roughly conversation. Again, once it's annexed, we are, we are maintaining it as a stormwater management system, much like we have other systems in the city. And so as long as it functions with regards to the engineering of how that was designed, that's, that's the extent of the maintenance of those facilities. Beyond the adjacent mowing, inside, there's some trails and stuff like that adjacent to them, we would maintain all of those.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And then, when you talk about silting in, and excuse upon this kind of getting in the weeds, I mean, when, when you have, you know, some of the reeds and weeds kind of growing up through there, does that diminish the capacity of, of the, the hold of the pond?
To the degree that you see silting and weed and vegetative introduction, would you see a rise in the elevation of that? If it got to the point where we started to be concerned with flooding of adjoining properties and stuff like that, that, that's when we would-
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank you. Then the last, thank you. The last area I was just going to make a comment on refers to number 59, which is Miracle Hills. And before I sat on the council, I, the last time this was proposed in, in an annexation package, I was actually on the planning board. And really for kind of the same reasons that was stated by the representative of the ownership, I don't know that in my mind, anything has really changed, and that I would still support keeping it out of the package. I think the SID tool is, is something that, you know, if we were to take that away from a potential developer, I think the public improvement costs that are associated with that would, would make the, the development of that property to its highest and best use just too expensive. And, and one of those is that, I think it's always been anticipated that you have a connection between 114, or between Dodge and Blondo on 114th, to the extent, I believe, when, when the Vanderbilt apartments were done on the other side of the creek, that run all the way up to, to Blondo, it's either hammer-headed or cul-de-sac, which would be about the landing point where that would, would happen. So I know there, you know, there's, there's been at least contemplation of, of making that connection for a number of years, and, and looking at the current status of, of not only, you know, the Miracle Hills Golf Course, but the surrounding area, and some of the retail, in Miracle Hills retail areas that are struggling. I think to take the development tool away from, from that opportunity could further hurt that, the rest of the adjoining area, or the, the abutting areas. And so I'll, I'll be supportive of, of taking that one out of the package as well. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Melton.
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Keever brought up, and mentioned it a number of times about the sewer costs. So could, Troy, would you be able to talk about what those costs are? Because I see that, I mean, there's costs in here, we have sewer costs to the city that are in our annexation analysis that you sent. Is there some reason that the, the residents have to pay for the sewer to hook up to, to the city, or could you explain how that process works?
Sure. So city codes and ordinances allow for, allow for and require for, I'll, I'll answer both. Allow for the continued use of wellfields, wells, and septics and septic fields, okay? So as these properties get annexed, we understand that they're not connected to, or possibly not connected to a, a water or wastewater system, they may be provided by well, septic fields. Those owners can continue to use those wells, septic fields, so long as those are in, in good repair and being well-maintained. Once those wells or septic systems become a health hazard or inoperable, the city codes and ordinances talk about a requirement for the residents or the business to connect to those available utilities where adjacent. So right now, there is a sewer line that runs along or in Grover Street, and there's another, I think it's a lift line, lift station, lift line along the, this road here, along the creek. So currently, there are no adjacent water or sewer lines to these adjoining properties. So in the event that, even if one of these systems fails, the Public Works Department has the discretion to authorize repairs, authorize replacement. It's only when there is an adjoining water or wastewater line that could be readily connected to, would the owners be required to connect, if for whatever reason their system fails and/or becomes a health hazard. Did I answer that well enough?
Yeah, when, so, and I just, and you may not know the answer to this, and maybe Mr. Keever does, what you're saying is, at the time you would require them to connect to the city sewer, it would be at a time when their sewer system cannot function anymore anyway.
Correct. And there was an adjacent sanitary sewer line that was readily available to be connected to. If there's not an adjoining line-
You can't.
We can't force them to connect.
And, and so if, if they put a line in, do you, you don't automatically tell them they have to hook up? Because I thought we ran into this-
No.
It was for fire.
Oh, and that was for fire, so you know what I was talking about? Okay. All right, I think that may have answered my question, is, and, and you may or may not know this, are the cost to hook up to the city $40,000, I think Mr. Keever said?
There's a part, part of the cost is the actual construction cost of extending a new line out to the tap, but I would defer to Public Works on the cost associated with the tap fee.
Public Works?
Mr. Fetter? I think they're asking-
Do you know?
Trying to turn this on, sorry. Is it broken, does yours-
It's on now.
You can hear it. Todd Fetter, Public Works. I don't have information on the tap fee at this time, I apologize, I will have to refer to our environmental section on that, that is not something I generally deal with, I apologize.
And I can give you where our numbers came from, if that would be beneficial to-
Okay, Mr. Anderson, I'll call Mr. Keever up.
I'll call you. So-
This number, the number that we came up with, as we were looking into this, came from our neighborhood, or our neighbor, Mr. Chaloha, who voluntarily hooked up to city services, I believe it was 2005. And we, he provided his receipts showing his expense then, and at that time, it was $26,000. Well, obviously 12 years ago, or whatever it was, I, I have all that at home in, in form of receipts. I also went on and found the average price per linear foot of installation cost, and that's where those numbers came from. The issue is not necessarily just the hooking up, it's the setback. We're an acre and a quarter from the main, or the potential main, and so when you figure you're trenching in supply or waste lines, an acre and a quarter, out-of-pocket expense. The other thing that's kind of ambiguous too, is there is an actual section of the city ordinance that says, within one year of the main being adjacent to your property, you can be forced to hook up. And I understand, I have spoken with the Public Health Department, John Ruff, as well as city officials and representatives, and I understand that there is that option of them granting you leeway on this, but there's also the option of them not. And that cost is very overwhelming, you know, when you're talking out-of-pocket expense to pay from my front door, where my sewer line comes out, down the acre, acre and a quarter, or whatever it is, down to the city main, that's the expense, out-of-pocket, the trenching in expense. And so I can provide those receipts for you if, if that would be beneficial.
I was just curious as to how that worked, but you understand, even if you were an annexed, that there is no requirement at this point, and there are no lines according to the city?
Correct, correct, yeah. And, and I guess the, I was told that there was a line, and I apologize, I guess I didn't check the validity of the source, but a line along 192nd Street on the west side, in what is currently unannexed, Land House Tree Farm on that side. I also know that, or I'm anticipating that down the line, they are expecting to widen 192nd Street, in which case, obviously then they'll have all the infrastructure torn up, and are they going to put it in then? It's neither here nor there, I don't know, they have to be able to provide services to all of these areas they're annexing, so that's definitely a possibility, I would say, I'm not a city planner. But, long story short, that's where we came with our number, not only the receipts that we have from the previous installation, but also the linear, average linear expense, and then that times the setback.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Does that answer your questions?
Yes, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Palermo.
Just a couple of quick questions also. The first one will be for planning, Mr. Fansla. I've seen you carry all those maps in, so I'm sure you're really wanting a question about right now. I know there's been talk about updating the city's master plan, how does this annexation fit into that future master plan?
Oh, okay, sorry, no light. Yeah, Dave Fansla, City Planning, how it fits into a future master plan, that's kind of hard to say, since we don't have that future master plan.
You're right, that was a bad question.
But I can tell you-
How about the master plan right now?
If it's very, the, the annexation package that is before you today fits very well into the current city master plan. It, it accomplishes a number of goals, it's, it's managed growth of the city, and we, we don't take that lightly, so when we- So when we evaluate annexation packages, we look at SIDs and the surrounding areas. The master plan also talks about folks who live near the city services should pay for those city services that they use every day. So those folks who are in our, the outskirts of our city limits, most likely use city services every day that the city taxpayers currently pay for. The master plan also states a goal that the city of Omaha, obviously being the largest city in the state and in the region, should strive to increase its market share of folks and grow in a managed and thoughtful way. So it meets, it meets the goals of the master plan in many ways.
Okay, thank you. One last question. And this could be for finance, Mr. Curtis also, but you may have the answer. So we hear about the package in whole being a positive. 10 years down the road, how many of these SIDs will be, say, net negative still?
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Is that working? Steve Curtis, City Finance. It's seven of the 13 show as negative, if you include Miracle Hills, which it sounds like some have suggested it coming out, it was de minimis, but roughly half, which is, I think, consistent with most packages.
Okay, thank you.
Is that all you have, Mr. Palermo?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no further lights, next item?
Item 60, an ordinance to insert Article 14 into Chapter 10 of the Omaha Municipal Code concerning Lift Assist Cost Recovery to allow the city to charge a fee to assisted living facilities and nursing care facilities when the Omaha Fire Department provides a lift assist to any person, and to establish an initial fee of $400 per lift assist.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 60 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Good morning. My name is, well, good afternoon. My name's Julie Sebastian. I'm with Newcastle Retirement Center on 90th and Western. Do I need to spell my name, Troy?
Your address.
Address, 900 North 90th Street.
Thank you.
Is the address at Newcastle. I'm not necessarily in opposition, I know there's only affirmative or negative, but I appreciate the work that the fire department does, and I understand the reasoning behind the ordinance, so I want to start with that. But I do want to encourage the council to consider doing a little bit more research and involve some stakeholders just a little bit more than what's been done, unless I just missed some work that the fire department did, which could be possible. But after reading the ordinance, I feel that it will potentially affect residents of assisted living in a few ways. For one, assisted living state regulations dictate that we cannot do skilled nursing in our, in our facilities. What that means is that we cannot assess a resident to determine if they are safe medically at certain levels. And so, sometimes when we call the fire department, it's because we aren't sure that someone is safe to get up. If they try to get up from having fallen, they might further hurt themselves, and so we need medical professionals to be on site to help determine that. So I don't know if that's something that the fire department discussed, or if there would be a way to limit the fees to kind of egregious calls, but I don't know that that's been fully researched or looked at. I don't know if you're all aware of those state regulations, or what kind of effect they might have. I also believe that there could be an unintentional result of discrimination of two groups. One would be of bariatric patients, because a person of a certain weight might require more assistance, and that could result in providers potentially declining admission for folks that are bariatric because of the worry of a fall. I also think that because of the lack of support by public insurance, like Medicare and Medicaid, that it could result in refusal of services by assisted livings or other providers to public insurance recipients. We have to keep our doors open and our lights on to everyone that we provide care for, and something like this that causes an additional burden for recipients of public insurance makes us go back to the financial drawing board and try to figure out whether or not we can manage that. So Newcastle is a nonprofit, it's part of our work to meet the needs of folks receiving public insurance who have spent down their life savings, and I just would hate to see an undue hardship on folks who are already low-income and struggling financially. And then I also think that there could be some research or some stakeholder input in terms of the potential for a structure like the false fire alarm structure of fees that we already are under, in which we get a couple of chances to learn and to try to do better. And if we continue to have false alarms, we begin to receive fees. So I'd like, you know, if this moves forward, for that to be considered potentially. And then we also, I would like to see the council potentially look at the volume of calls to assisted living or skilled nursing versus the amount of calls to independent, to folks living independently. Because right now, if I was caring for my grandmother in my home, and she fell, and I needed help getting her up, I could call the fire department, and I don't know that I would receive a fee for that. Whereas if I am responsible and see my limits, and where I can't maybe meet all the needs of my grandmother, and she's living in an assisted living because that's the best option my family had, suddenly we're subject to fees, either through an increased rent charge or through the passing along of those fees to the family. So I just don't know that all of these questions have maybe been answered. I don't know if they're questions you already have, but I wanted to come and just speak to that, offer my input if there is a stakeholder group, and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Fetter?
Thanks, Mr. President. I wasn't previously aware of questions on this issue, but Newcastle is in my district, and I know a good employer and quite a good operator there of the services they provide. So Deputy Chief, do you want a chance to respond to those, or would it be helpful for you to connect with them before next week, given that this is the public hearing? Come on down.
Kathy Bossman, Assistant Chief, Omaha Fire, 1516 Jackson. I also did not have Newcastle's questions. I can address some of them. Approximately 22% of the fall calls that we respond to are to the staffed facilities, nursing homes, and assisted living facilities. So the fee is really addressed at the facility, not at the individual. If a person is in a private residence, they would not be subjected to this fee.
Okay. And were there any stakeholder meetings, or...
I did not have any stakeholder meetings with any Newcastle employees, no.
Okay. Unless others have questions, I don't want to maybe drag it out today, but would you be willing to meet with Julie and kind of talk through all her questions and see what can get resolved before, I guess, next week?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo?
Thank you, President Gray. Sorry, was it Julie? Could I have you come back down, please?
On your way down, I'll just mention that we heard 22% of the calls for the fire department are from assisted living. Do you have the numbers for maybe just your particular facility for maybe day, week, month that you would call the fire department for an assist?
I don't have those numbers. I could look back and try to gather some of those numbers. But I think, was the 22%, did that include skilled nursing facilities as well, or just assisted living? Okay. So, at Newcastle, we call for a variety of things. Not very frequently for lift assistance, simply lift assistance. So, a lot of times, it's someone who maybe has fallen, they, something is hurting pretty badly, and we don't feel safe to lift them with the medication aids that staff the facility. So assisted living is, does not require us to have a nurse on staff 24/7, nor are those nurses, even if they are in the building, allowed to do complex medical assessment. So, most of our calls are going to be because we need medical assistance, medical advice. They don't always end up going to the ER. Sometimes the team is able to stabilize people and give some advice, and then we can follow up with family or with caregivers. So I don't have exact numbers, I can work on that, but I, my best guess would be less than 5% are simply for a lift assistance.
How many, like in a normal week, if you had to guess?
How many calls?
For just a lift assist, not for the other added...
One or less.
One or less? Okay, thank you very much.
My concern is that this fee would grow and start to encompass the medical calls that we make as well. So, that would be my worry. Then it would be, then it would be 10 per month, 10-plus per month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jarom?
Yes, Assistant. Assistant Chief, can you come back up, please?
I can clarify a little bit of that.
You have to tell us your name.
I'm sorry, Kathy Bossman, Omaha Fire, 1516 Jackson. The lift assist specifically is for individuals who have fallen that have not complained of any injury as a result of the fall, they did not fall as a result of a medical condition. They don't require any medical care at all, they simply need help up off of the floor. So any patient, once the fire department gets there, and they say, you know what, my knee kind of hurts, we would call for an ambulance to transport them, and the lift assist fee would not apply.
Could you do us a favor and run the numbers on that address for the lift assist?
I could, yes. And we have numbers for the Omaha Fire Department, and these are best guest estimates, but from 2016, we had 289 calls that would have been eligible for the lift assist, and in 2017, 344. And that's citywide for all staffed facilities. And so far, in 2018, we're at about 195 calls that would be eligible for the lift assist. That does not include any individuals who've fallen and have medical conditions or medical complaints and require transport.
And that's coded out to something else and charged appropriately?
That is just a medical call, yes.
Right. So these are purely non-medical...
Purely non-medical.
Help, I've fallen and I can't get up, kind of a deal?
Correct.
As soon as they say, oh, my leg hurts, or my back, or whatever, then they, it's not treated the same way?
Correct. And our dispatchers do a pretty good job of asking the caller to 911. They will ask all those questions, are there any injuries? And we rely on the callers to provide some of that information.
Right. And for the address that this facility is located, I would imagine you can run every type of call and break it down, so you'll provide that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fetter?
Thanks, one last question for you there, too, that I thought of as Councilman Jarom was speaking. So there was reference to the false alarm ordinance that was adopted many years ago, and I think some of the impetus behind that was there were a lot of, a lot of false alarms throughout the city, and it was a big demand on city, on police resources. And so the fee was meant, in some ways, to discourage, and I should say, encourage more responsible behavior from false alarms, or just tripping your alarm at home, and it seems the numbers support that that's worked out. With this, it sounds like there's only 300 a year or so, so it's not so much about resources. Is this more of an attempt to recoup costs, or how would you describe the impetus of this?
Really, there's three components to the ordinance that are important to us. First of all, it is a service that we provide to the facilities, and we are happy to provide that service. If they call 911, we will always respond. Another component is recouping a portion of costs. There is wear and tear on our apparatus, there's fuel costs, there's wear and tear on our employees, quite honestly. And the third part really has to do with the amount of time our crews are out of service for what we consider a non-emergency call. So if we are helping a person up who has no medical emergency, no injuries, it would be considered non-emergency. So while that apparatus is out of service, that crew is out of service helping that individual up, they're not available for any other emergencies within their district. So we would be relying on fire apparatus from neighboring fire zones to respond, you're going to have longer response times, additionally increased fuel costs, more wear and tear on the rigs. So we're looking, trying to look big picture at the whole concept related to lift assist.
Okay. So the volume's quite different, but the impetus is similar to what, how the false alarm ordinance might be described?
Sure. And our plan really with the lift assist ordinance, should it be passed, is to educate all of the facilities that we work with in Omaha and implement this slowly in the coming, in the beginning of 2019. It's not something hard and fast that's going to start, you know, in two weeks. So we would like to educate them, answer their questions, and begin in 2019.
January 1st, 2019, you said?
Yes.
Is that what the ordinance says? I'm not sure, I didn't see it start...
I don't know, to be honest, if it has the exact date on there.
It does seem reasonable to me, so I'm glad you thought of that, should this pass, that there's some time in which to engage everyone and...
Yes.
And have education sessions if needed, and how this would work, okay. But in the meantime, you will meet with Julie and report the results to us?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. No more lights, next item?
Item 61, an ordinance to approve an interlocal agreement with the Village of Boystown to provide certain prosecutorial services for the Village of Boystown.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 61 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item?
Item 62, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 15 of the Omaha Municipal Code to include regulations for bottle clubs consistent with state statutes.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 62 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed, next item?
Non-action items, item 63 through 86 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
And for those in the audience who may be listening in, we have listed an executive session to address labor negotiations. That has been moved to at least one week later, so we won't be going into executive session today. With that, is there a motion adjourned? Just moved and seconded to adjourn, a roll call.
Jarom?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Fetter?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting adjourned at 3:26.